Okay, I guess we ready to get started. I don't think Will's gonna be here. I don't think we got about his presence here. About two minutes in. Would you like to say that right? I doubt you will.
I'm fairly certain of that.
I guess we just go ahead and get started.
Okay, President Robinson's not gonna, he gonna be here tonight for, for seeing reason, but he apologized for, I think I just seen his email when I got in here. I saw what Greg had responded to Roger, so, uh, this is for training for the, uh, planning commission to get some hours in for that, so. At this time, we'll, uh, turn the training over to, oh, maybe we need to have the minutes read.
Okay, alright.
The minutes read by.
Uh, so again, I just got, I didn't make too many copies. I'll record one. There you go. Yeah, sure. Alright, we'll, uh, read the minutes and, uh, this is from, uh, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, six P M. Members were present was Mayor Lowery, President Robinson, Secretary Billings, uh, City Planner, uh, Chef Morel. Uh, the town of Saltillo Planning and Zoning Commission was called to order by President Robinson at six P M on Tuesday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Roger Gant and Georgia Brewer were at for the meeting. The minutes of September twenty twenty two meeting were read by Billings and motion was made to approve the minutes as read by Robertson. A second was made by Mayor Lowery. The minutes were approved. There was no new business. The last meeting was required yearly training for members of the planning commission, which was led by Plan Morel. Plan Morel stated that there was no new business. Secretary Billings asked to draft a letter to Carl Fonda Burger, Barger, Fonda Burger, uh, and his power of attorney Jimmy Take to identify the specific ordinances governing the Marina campground. The letter drafted by Billings was read aloud. Mayor Lowery stated that the letter simply acknowledges the provisions and expectations of operation. Billings stated that the intent of the letter would help to guide the property owner in conversion of ownership or future operation. Plan Morel said that the letter looked appropriate and it simply stated the ordinances have been in place. Billings stated that based on recent action of potential conversion, it was good practice to inform the owner of the ordinance. Mayor Lowery made a motion to forward the letter as read and enclosed the specific Marina campground ordinances. Robertson seconded the motion. Motion passed. Robertson stated that the next meeting will be February twenty two at six P M. Uh, Planner Shelton stated that the February meeting would be our second required yearly training. With no further business, a motion was made by Robertson to adjourn the meeting. A second was made by Billings.
Heard the reading of the minutes, we have motion approved the minutes as read.
I make that motion.
Motion by, uh, Planner Gant, uh, second. I think three years of majority, so all of my Billings. I mean, the Planner Billings.
Yeah.
Planner Gant and myself, so I vote yes to approve the minutes as read. Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and since it's raining, so we don't want to get them swimming, so. We'll go ahead and turn the, uh, the meeting over to Planner Shelton Morel.
Alright, uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, and, and Planners, uh, we appreciate you and for being here tonight. Basically, we'll be talking tonight about vested rights, uh, vesting. And these are, this is a part of the property rights, uh, training that's our, uh, required training that you all have every single year. Uh, this, this legislation that we're gonna go over tonight, has basically was adopted in, uh, under Governor William Haslam's administration, I think circa sometime in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, and it's, it's basically a layer of protection for developers, provided that they do things in principle that they agreed to, uh, with the community. Uh, so, uh, let's go over the, the little handout I got for you tonight there. There are several, uh, uh, what, what are property rights in Tennessee? Okay, there, there, there are several types of, of property rights. You got possession, use, control, quiet enjoyment, exclusion, and disposition. According to the attorneys and how may rights be held? Well, you, you got a couple of ways that you can hold those rights. There are multiple ways, uh, to own, use, or use, uh, real, real property. You can do the free simple method, through a leasehold, an easement, right of way, license, mineral, air, and R lateral support. Uh, these are eight different ways that you can acquire the rights. Now, uh, how may rights be held? Well, again, uh, there are multiple ways to own or joint, or own or control real property. Fee simple, life estates, joint tenancy, uh, uh, with the, uh, man, I forget what the nomenclature is, the acronym R S is, is, is right now. Uh, tennis by, uh, entirety, married with America. Uh, joint tenancy, adverse possession, and corporate partnerships. Uh, and so, uh, right of the less than, uh, fee simple. Okay, uh, now let's go over it again. What the right of less than fee simple. Many of these rights are not considered full ownership or grant the holder full control. Alright, and these are leaseholders, which are long or short term, easements temporary or permanent, right of way maybe. Uh, license, mineral, the air, uh, the air rights, joint tenancy without R S can be, uh, severed, and corporate partnership. Okay, how are property rights, we get into the vesting, we gonna get into the vesting part. How are property rights granted and acquired? Again, you can do this by deed, which is a warrant, a deed, or special warrant, or quick claim, uh, adverse possession, or eminent domain. Alright. I don't like that term, that Latin term, eminent domain, but cities, they use it sometimes. And y'all, y'all do know what eminent domain means, but, uh, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother training session, so not tonight. So how are, listen, their fee rights granted or acquired? They, by these different ways right here. Uh, by an agreement, a subdivision plaque, restrictive covenants, prescription, uh, R, which is a prescription either, or eminent domain. Okay, now, the restrictions on these rights, private covenants. Now, uh, restrictive covenants. Now, uh, I'm just gonna go over to, go on my sermon, then I'll go on the sidebar a little bit. Now, restrictive covenants, uh, these really can't be enforced by a city government. These are enforced by homeowners associations, uh, basically, or the developer himself, uh, when he develops the subdivision and records it with the, uh, with the subdivision plaque. Now, restricted covenants are by their nature a restriction on the right of a property owner to use his or her land how he or she see fit. Okay, uh, now this concept goes back to the eighteenth century. Uh, and basically, uh, when you had the English practice of building a cluster of homes around the Commons Square. Okay, uh, but this practice has accelerated in the last fifty years in the U S. And so more than sixty-three million Americans live in an estimated three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred association governed communities as of October in two thousand and twelve, so this is old information, that's ten years ago, it's probably gone since then. So, uh, let's talk about these different type of covenants. You got restrictive covenants broken down into, into two. You got the express covenant and you got the implied covenant. Now, the express covenant is, like I told you before, a little too earlier, is done by the developer once he records the subdivision and he puts those, uh, stipulations in place. Uh, again, express covenants are these, those covenants and restrictions filed by the developer of a neighborhood restrict, restricting the use of the property. Things like the number of animals, uh, that can, uh, one can hold, where your satellite dish, or trash cans could be located, and etc. Now, the implied covenants come from the subdivision plaque itself. Okay, it says those that may be gleaned from a plaque of subdivision, the plaque must be referenced in the property deed to be a restriction on that property. By necessity, where it is necessary to imply this covenant to carry out the intended restriction or by a common general plan or scheme of development. Where the intent, where the intent of the restriction might be gleaned by what is actually built and may also be approved by marketing materials relied upon by the purchase, purchase. Okay, now, restricted covenants, you know, again, the planning commission, uh, they don't have a dog in that fight. Or the, the, the city board, they don't have a dog in that fight. They're either expressed or they either enforced by their, again, the division of development or subsequented by the homeowners association. Okay, uh, restrictions on the rights. Uh, the plaque notes, notes on a plaque may be, may also be considered a restriction on the use of the property. So as long as the plaque is also referencing the deed of conveying. Uh, a deed and the plaque which includes the property, granted must read together. I'm gonna read that again. A deed and the plaque which includes the property, granted must be read together and whatever appears on the plaque is to be considered a part of the deed. So, it's like we got into a real conversation earlier before the meeting, meeting started. By law, the rest of deeds is required, once they see the presence of a, a deed, they are required by law to record that deed. But if we got a good working relationship with them, they would also tell the applicant developer or subdivision that, hey, although, you know, I'm recording your deed today, this does not, uh, exempt you from paying a visit down to the town of Saltillo. They have subdivision regulations and by law you are required, uh, to, to abide by what they also have as far as that regard is concerned, uh, but they're not legally required to do that. You would think that we would work in harmony, but, uh, uh, sometimes it's, it's, it's not that way. But going on, that, just because they record a deed and you have subdivision regulations, they must also provide a plaque also. Okay.
And that's, that's by law, right?
That's by law, yes, sir. Once you've adopted, uh, subdivision regulations and have proof that you have gone through the proper channels of adopting, that means being at least, uh, I think, uh, thirty day notice, or, or, uh, city, I think fifteen day notice, I can't remember. It's, it's on the, it, it, it's, I'm pretty sure we did it right every time. You, you had the proper notice, the planning commission adopted the, uh, subdivision regulations, uh, and that's, and that's it.
Is that, uh, I got a question if, if, uh, uh, register, I mean, if the, uh, such a property don't tell the people that, uh, that sub, I mean, that's, sub, I mean, we got regulations, then who does that fall on, the seller or the buyer?
It would be incumbent upon, well, you would think that the seller, uh, would, would, would do the right thing, but oftentimes they don't. It would be incumbent upon a city officer to inform them, uh, that, you know, we know that y'all are probably in the process of assating this property, uh, but, uh, the, the seller, if y'all approach us, you're supposed to tell him, we have subdivision regulations.
Yeah, well, who's, who's, uh, I mean, what I mean is who's responsible, uh, for the action? Is it the person that bought the property or the person that sold the property?
Really, the first, well, it could be viewed to be both, but the, the original owner, uh, if he, if they know, if they know of the, and aware that you have subdivision regulations and they sold the property by meets and bounds and by deed only and not by, uh, not by subdivision regulation, they the ones you could, uh, you could possibly sue. Now, not saying that, now, I'm not a lawyer, an attorney by any means, not saying that you couldn't go after the, the one that purchased the property, but it's kinda hard to go after the one that purchased the property when all he's done or she's done was just bought what was presented to them. They have probably no iota of an idea that you have subdivision regulations.
And they could have bought a piece of the property, not multiple pieces of property.
Correct. That's why if you're gonna go after anybody, not, that's the bad terminology to use. If you're going to make sure that your subdivision regulations are enforced, you wanna catch that seller. You know, otherwise, you'd be making a person that just bought the property, uh, after the fact, present a plaque on property that he's already purchased, when that was the developer's or the seller's responsibility. Okay, uh, now, there was a misdemeanor, uh, Class C misdemeanor associated with selling, uh, properties representing a plant but not getting it recorded or approved by the planning commission. And but the, uh, the, the state law has changed. It's still, uh, uh, a remedy, a legal, uh, ordeal they had to go through, but they took away the, the, the Class C misdemeanor uh, status, or status on them, uh, for doing so. So they changed the law where they lessen the blow to the developer as far as the repercussions that occurred if they didn't do it for a subdivision property. So that's just, that's just something to keep in mind. Uh, restrictions on the plaque, uh, where the notes on the plaque are clear and unambiguous and where they are also legible, then, uh, they may be applied as if an express restrictive, uh, covenant. And how does this affect a local, uh, re, uh, regulator's view of the property? Uh, zoning officials, uh, zone, uh, zoning official does not have the authority to enforce a true restrictive covenant, as we said before. This is a private contract, essentially what it is, between the seller and the buyer of land. And, and however, notes on a plaque that were included because of zoning or other regulatory requirements uh, may be enforced as a part of that regulation and not because it is a plaque or, or note implied, uh, or restrictive covenant. So, that's important to keep in mind. And I'm about to wind it down and we get into most of, most of this vested, uh, vested law. Restriction on the rights regulations, okay? There are all types of regulations in effect, a restriction on the right to use one's land. And we just gonna name six tonight. That is zoning, subdivision regulations, stormwater regulations, sewage and wastewater regulations, and general health and safety and welfare ordinances and resolutions, and all other state and federal statutes and regulations. Now, before we get into that note down at the bottom, keep in mind, these regulations are brought about for the promotion of the health, safety, and welfare, and used to be public morals of those involved, the citizens. So, we're not coming up with, uh, laws just to be contrary to a person that owns property. That's foolish. Now, the, the zoning and subdivision regulations are there to help buttress their health, their safety, and their welfare. So that's what that's all about. Uh, and keep in mind that the power of the regulator is not amended and is balanced by the constitutional implications of the balance. Other regulations, they must be proportionate or necessary to that which the government is seeking to protect or accomplish due process rights, equal protection rights, and etc. And these are found in the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments of the U S, United States Constitution. Alright? Due process gotta be a bit. Alright, now vested rights, now I wanna break it down to you in a nutshell. And then you can, you can keep on with it. Basically, uh, you cannot change the, the, you cannot move the goalposts while, while the team is at play. In other words, we cannot change the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, or any of the development regulations while the development is in, uh, while it's active. In other words, once we approve the preliminary plaque, final plaque or whatever, whatever, for that particular subdivision, or whatever, whatever, then those set of regulations have to stay bound to that particular developer. Can they amend it? Well, yes, the, the plaque can be amended, but if it sprays drastically from what was originally proposed, then you all don't have to grant the amendment and you can start the process all over. Now, we're gonna go over this slowly and surely to make sure you get it, because, uh, you know, you can, you can take a little bit and run with it, but you got to leave the hole to, to, to understand how you can operate it. Again, we talked about this, this law came, I was wrong, I said two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, uh, when it came about in, when President, not President, the Governor Haslam signed it into law. And basically, uh, it provides for, uh, now, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the script. It said vested rights doctrine is originally common law adjustment made doctrine and provided certainly as to where a developer will be protected from any new government regulation. What does it mean to be vested? Okay, the authority to proceed with the development based upon the rules, regulations, standards in place at the time of the approval, of the approval of the development, even if the rules, regulations, and standards have been amended. Okay, now, what's common, the common law. In order to be vested, one had to prove that he or she had an issuance of a building permit, uh, plus substantial construction, uh, and, you know, or expedient, uh, to the man. So you, you got to have that procured and approved. I obtained a building permit and, well, we started some construction on the ground, and we started some preliminary work on the ground, so. Now, where a landowner has done nothing subsequent to the, uh, obtaining of the permit, he is generally bound by any change in the zoning ordinance. Let me read that again here. If they haven't done anything since they got the building permit, they ain't approved the ground, they ain't moved nothing out there, they ain't built nothing, anything, disturbed the ground whatsoever, whatever zoning changes are. Subdivision regulations amendments that y'all have, uh, approved during that period, they have to abide by those amendments because they hadn't done anything, uh, on their development besides secure, uh, a building permit. You have to have proof that you actually have done something to the ground.
So you can still move the goalpost?
Yeah, technically, yes, sir, if, if, if you had, if all of the criteria had been met. So you, you, you can, uh, provide it, but you can't if he meets or she meets all of the letters of the law. I mean, technically, you, you, you can't, but you can if they don't do, if they don't do dispositive.
That, does that apply to the whole subdivision?
Subdivision or anything related to zoning, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and so.
So if they sold one piece of property and they're beginning to build a house?
Well, one, one could construe that to be, then, well, that, that's, that's development. So I mean, they can't, they can't sell until, well, I guess they could sell before the subdivision's finished, but one could constitute, read that in court of law, and I'm not a lawyer or attorney or judge, but one can construe that to be some sort of, you know, construction and start commencing with that development.
Okay.
So it would be kinda hard to.
Which would give a vested right.
Give that, that would give them a vested right.
Okay.
Alright.
So in other words, the subdivision we have out here.
That's going out there to sign their property, so.
They, they've driven stakes, they've divided up lots.
They've done more than, yeah, a building permit, so that they've, they've, they've got the, uh, survey marks and subdivision stuff out there like that, that showing signs that they're progressing with their, uh, subdivision now. Especially the disturbing dirt, building roads, cutting road in, yeah, that's pretty much, yeah, that's, that's, they actually meeting the law on that. So, uh, that's, that's, that's how the, the vested rights are obtained now. It says, uh, in order to be vested, one had to approve he or she, and we said their, uh, size of building plus the substantial construction or spending the monies. Where a landowner has done nothing subsequent to obtaining the permit, they're bound again by the zoning ordinance, even if it's in effect to nullify the permit. They just had to start over, but they had done nothing. Okay, and then that's it, that's it's it. The building permit must be lawful, be issued, or. Now, getting into notes and votes. Vested Property Rights Act was signed by Governor Haslam, April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, became effective January one, two thousand and fifteen, and it was applicable to all regional and municipal planning commission. What does it vest? Development standards equal all locally adopted or enforced standards, regulations, guidelines applicable to the development of the property. Alright, now, what are some examples of this, Shelton, well? Local, uh, construction standards applicable to streets, alleys, curbs, sidewalks, buildings, lot size, lot configuration, yard dimensions, zoning, local stormwater regulations, all site improvement. Now, these development standards do not include standards required by the federal or state law. They are building, constructing, safety standards adopted by a local government pursuant to the, uh, authority granted by T C A section, uh, six eight one twenty, uh, uh, section one oh one, okay? So, uh, that's, that's pretty much, uh, understandable there, it said, uh, what rights are vested? Okay, and then I'm gonna get you out of there. During a period of time in which development status are vested, the standards that were in effect on the date of approval, uh, of the preliminary development plan or building permit will remain the standards applicable to the project during the vesting period. Now, we get into the lengthy time. We ain't gonna read all this, we're gonna vest the tape. If they do everything they're supposed to do, they have the first initiative, they have three years. And then if they come back with any more subsequent improvement to that, uh, without actually changing from the original plan, then they have another two year period, it can be up to five years. Maximum, it can go no longer than fifteen years. That's, that's the bottom line, fifteen years. And I guess the state said, if you ain't done, if we ain't done anything in fifteen years, hell, you ain't gonna do nothing. So, uh, I mean, finish the, or complete the project. Uh, you got a maximum period up to fifteen years. Now, if the property, the developments, if they sell the property or sales development, the new owner still has those same rights that the original owner had as far as the vested rights are concerned. So you don't start over once you get a new owner. Say, I said, oh, man, it's gonna cost me more, and I thought, I gotta sell this stuff, or I can go bankrupt. And I find me a sucker somewhere and he buys the development. Well, it's not a sucker. If he got the, if he got more money, if he has more money than I have, he can do something with it that I can't. He can actually make it do, make it do what the town would want, uh, to be. So he sells the ground to somebody else, let's say he sells it to his brother-in-law, whoever's got loan pockets, they come in and save him from this development, he still, or she, is still afforded the same vesting that the original owner had, provided that there's no substantial change from the original plan. Because when we get, and, and, when you continue reading, you'll find that y'all can hold their feet to the fire. If they change the, uh, proposed development drastically on, increasing the number of lots and all this other kind of stuff, taking up more area and all that, oh, you can say, oh, no, sir. You have to bring this back in, we got to start all over again, because you have, this is what was originally proposed to us. So.
So, and if, if, you say it's a fifteen year completion date, so if this sold.
But they have criteria, they got criteria they had to meet and all.
Right, but if they don't do nothing, nothing for thirteen years, and then they sell it, or else they start breaking ground the fourteenth year, they still gotta limit to fifteen years, right?
It's a limit to fifteen years, but they hadn't done anything until twelve years, it's all null and void anyway. You gotta start all over again anyway, because, uh, uh, again, they got up to three years on that original preliminary plan and the assating of the building permit to do something to that ground. If they don't do anything, the two years extended period is gone, and then the period of extension subsequent to that, uh, first initial extension that's required by the law, if they're doing everything they're supposed to do, all that's null and void. You've got to do something in order to get that maximum fifteen years. Now, see, single-phase development, a single-phase, excuse me, I gotta go on, I, I'm getting a little rusty. A single-phase development has ten-year maximum, a multi-phase development has fifteen. So, ten years from the date of approval from the preliminary plan. So, ten years from the date of approval from the preliminary plan, so long as the requirements to achieve the vesting period are met. The developer must maintain all necessary permits during that ten-year period. And likewise on the fifteen, on the, uh, multi-phase development. Now, get to the real need to be gritty here, what must a developer do to acquire these vested rights? That's what we just got to talk about. The vesting period begins, I'm on page twelve, on the date of approval of the preliminary, preliminary development plan. And continues for three years. During the three-year period, the developer must obtain an approval of the final development plan. And secure any necessary permits and commence with site prep. That means, once that preliminary is done, he got a certain amount of time before he has to come in with that file. And once he gets that file approved, that's when he can start what he did with it. All right, now, if these three things occur during the three-year period, the vesting period will extend an additional two years. Uh, two-year period during which developer must commence construction and maintain any necessary permits. Now, should all of these, uh, actions occur during the five-year period, the developer has vesting to ten or fifteen years. Now, vesting rights, how many, I mean, how may a development lose its vesting right? Say it early. The developer violates any of the terms or conditions in the approv- in the approved development plan or building permit. Violates any of the terms or conditions in the relevant ordinance or resolution. Or the local government makes a written finding that the developer intentionally supplied inaccurate information. Information or knowingly made material, uh, misrepresentations and obtained. Approval of the development plan or building permit. Now, four, the local government makes a written finding that the developer intentionally. And knowingly did not construct the development in accordance with the approval of the building permit or development plan. And five, there is enacted a new state or federal statute or law, a rule, policy, or corrective action. Or other governance that is required to be enforced by the local government and that precludes the development as. Contemplated in the approved building permit or development plan. So, those are the instances in which they can lose the vested right, those five things. I'm drawing to a close now, says, but, the local government must make a written determination of the above. And the developer must be given ninety days, you gotta give them ninety days to the date of the notification there to rectify the project. It, uh, if a new federal or state requirement, uh, the local government must give the developer ninety days to modify. The development plan or building permit to comply, you, you have to give them some, uh, some time. It's a ninety-day period, it's been spelled out in the state law. Okay, now, whether the local government still require developer compliance with new, uh, different standards despite vesting rights. Developer gives his written or her written, unconceivable, which any who are. Uh, local government determines in writing that a compelling, uh, countervailing, uh, interest exists or natural. Or man-made hazard exists on or in the vicinity of the property. Uh, that was not identified as seriously threatens the public health, safety, or welfare. And the threat cannot be mitigated or reasonable, uh, uh, time by the developer within the vested, uh, development standard. Or, the local government is required by the federal or state government to enforce the new development. Okay, it's pretty cut and dry then. All right, then, I will be quiet when I leave you with this, it says, what about amendments to an approved development plan? Now, the vested standards apply to the amended plan unless the local government makes a written determination. That the amendment alters the proposed use, increases the overall area of development, we were talking about this earlier. Uh, alters the size of any residential structures, non-residential structures, excuse me. And, let me read that again, alters the size of any non-residential structures. Increases the density so as to affect traffic, increases noise, or have other adverse environmental impacts. Or increases any local government amount of monies that have to be spent necessary to implement the proposed use. All right, so we got, uh, last, if the local government does not approve a proposed amendment, what happens? The developer may proceed under the previously approved plan with the same vested standards. The developer may submit a new application and allow his or her vested rights to terminate. And the local government, uh, may also allow the developer to proceed with the amendment with the vested rights. All right, so, and finally, in general, the local government may not require developer. Uh, to waive his or her, uh, vested rights as a condition of approval. I mean, that's just standard, uh, a court of law throw that out. If a development is said, is sold, excuse me, the new owner has the right to complete the project with the vested rights. Of his or her predecessor entitled. And the law doesn't affect a local government zoning authority, however, zoning is a development standard that is vested. And finally, a moratorium on development enacted by a local government will toll the vested period. For the development approved prior to the moratorium, but where the development has not commenced. That's, that's, that's pretty much it in here. Uh, the other sheet there is the straight Tennessee code, uh, talking about the vested. So, uh, we have to be careful when, whenever we get a development. If we maintain those regulations for that development, provided that they are doing something to the ground. And again, they have up to ten, possibly fifteen years, uh, fifteen years if it's a multi-phase development. So, I know I kept it longer than what I intended to, but, uh. When it comes to vesting and property rights, it's, it's kind of very important because you can easily be sued, uh. If you, if you don't know, if you don't know their rights, uh, they, 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 this is the, the, the ticket society. And, uh, whenever you're regulating them, you, you got to operate under auspices in which you, uh, able. The enabling legislation, uh, in, in order to do so, you can't go above and beyond what, what you have in Tennessee code. So, any questions, uh, you, you might have additional, to what we're talking about tonight?
I got a question, I don't know if it's, it really doesn't pertain to. Us as a zoning commission, but we did touch on it with restrictive covenants. If a developer has a restricted covenant. Anyone who buys land has to live by those restrictive covenants.
That's correct, that's just private contract to him or her perks in the property, right?
Okay, it's contract between the seller.
And the buyer.
Developer and the buyer.
Right, not the city or the.
Do the buyers have any rights in that?
No, because really, they, they, what their rights are, are to read those stipulations. And if they agree to those stipulations, and, uh, you know, I would think you would read those private covenants for me, but I bought the property. All the time, it does not happen, but you would think before a person secures the money from a bank or whatever, or spend their hard-earned money. Uh, to, to, to build or to, to, I would not build, but, but they couldn't build too. But to purchase in this subdivision where these private covenants are, it's prudent that they actually ascertain a copy and read. Apply to them, sign their life away for fifteen or thirty years, or, uh, won't desire to live there.
Okay, what I mean by rights of the buyer, for instance, the, the developer says, there's a restrictive covenant on all these lots. That you cannot put a mobile home on.
And they are out there like that.
Now, the buyers buy that property because they think that there're not gonna be any mobile homes in that area. Can the developer later say, I'm gonna release that restrictive covenant? And then allow people to, to buy and put a mobile home on?
I wouldn't think so because that wasn't a, that wasn't a written contract. And if the contract is supposed to be, you know, executed for everybody in that particular area. Once you stray from that particular contract, then everybody that purchased property in that subdivision can turn around and sue that developer. Because they bought it.
Yeah.
Under the expression that, or intention, we ain't, we ain't even not gonna have any mobile homes.
So, the buyer does have some rights.
I would, I would think, yeah, in that, in that vein in regard, yes, sir.
Yeah, what, what I've seen is, in a lot of developments, like, the developer is responsible for the, everything. But rarely do they go back and try to enforce anything.
Right.
But the other property owners can't get together and file a suit, but what you mostly see.
The buyer that's.
Against the, against the offender and the developer. But what you mostly see in these homeowners associated in these big cities, they're the ones that really go after that kind of stuff. The HOAs, they really stick to, but they got, you know, they pay extra fees to have, be an HOA. And they really go after people that don't meet those covenants or whatever, but.
I was, I was referencing, and I don't know enough to even tell you what the facts are, but over in Crump, the River Heights subdivision. Supposedly, that had a restrictive covenant that no trailers or no mobile homes.
Right, and they didn't abide by it?
And there's mobile homes all over the place.
Well, now, one good example is Morton Landon down there. It's got a homeowners association, plus, uh, your houses have to be certain color, you can only.
Within a reasonable range, no, no bright.
Right, but you know Morton Landon is down here on the river below us.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I know I used to be one of our attorneys, I used to live, Burleson, Bill Burr, used to live down there. And, uh, and they had the homeowners association, so, you know. But like you say, that don't involve a town or nothing like that, it's just.
That's private.
And I don't think the, I don't think the painting of the building and all that, that's the homeowners association with that, right?
Association.
That don't have nothing to do, but they usually don't put it in a restricted covenant, so, right? I mean, the Landon, uh.
Right, that, that, those are the type of, uh, restrictions, the color of the house and things of that nature. But it would all be in the private covenants, restricted covenants.
Right.
It would not be in a deed, that, that would be in the covenants. And usually those covenants are recorded in the, in the, in the deed of the subdivision.
So, that would fall under the homeowners association.
That would fall upon the homeowners association.
But what you can't put on a property would fall under the, the developer and the, the, the buyer restricted covenant.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's a private contract between him or her and the person, purchasing the, the particular lot.
What, what happens if, if the developer goes bankrupt, not a business? And does that restrictive covenant null and void?
That restrictive covenant is still intact on to whoever isn't able to enforce it. If they don't have a homeowners association, it goes to crap because who's going to enforce it?
Right.
If the developer goes really up, and he doesn't sell it out to anybody else to have a good sense or due diligence to find those private, uh, covenants. And, and still abide by them or, or maintain them, or maintain the subdivision, uh.
Well, three, so the property owners could get together, I would assume, and say, we're gonna file a suit just ourselves, because this guy lives next to us, so. They could still do.
Well, they could.
Make them change what they've done.
I got one last question, now, what if you, uh, like, say, of course, the city has all this subdivision regs, et cetera. Now, what if a person just bought a property? And didn't, and assess a property, didn't notify the people that was buying it, that it was, had zoning or restrictive use? For instance, like, a person sold property and say, hey, you can put a mobile home here, but in this area, it's not zoned for mobile homes. What happens then?
Uh, what, what, what happens is, well. The city would have to enforce its zoning ordinance at that point, or, or subdivision regulations that they, or regardless of the developer. All right, uh, they say ignorance of the law is no excuse. I learned that. And in ten years old, that right, but I didn't go to jail or nothing like that, I just had a good officer talk to me real good, so.
If a town had a place where it was restricted for a single wire mobile home. And, uh, then a person sold property and the people thought they could put one. And then they bought it and actually put one there, then the city would have to enforce this subdivision, right?
That's correct, or zoning ordinance, that's correct, they could put a written mandate, make, uh, say, if you're in violation of our ordinance. And every day that you're in violation of our ordinance, you can be fined up to fifty dollars a day. Because I don't know specifically what, how the South Teller ordinance reads, but that's how most owner's laws read. If there's not a specific number, it, it does say you can be fined up to, uh, 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 fifty dollars a day.
I think I have to read like that, fifty dollars a day.
So, yes, sir, I mean, yeah, I mean, just because.
To just, I mean, if they wouldn't worry and just move, bought the land, moved the trailer on there, so, they had to move it, right?
Yes, sir, as unfair as, and unfair as it is, if the city doesn't want it there, and the city's owner doesn't provide for it to be there, and the people. And the neighbors want it gone, it's got, it's got to be gone. And, and according to Tennessee code annotated, people moving trailers in got to ask, can't a permit anyway? They gotta have a permit to, to, to get it on the road, to move it, and they gotta get a permit to set it up. They gotta get a permit in the city to set it up anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I think, as you say that, I think there's something, well, even buying these days, a used trailer. That you have to have a specific permit to even move that from another lot down the highway to a new lot.
That's correct.
I think there's some new, uh.
That's correct, yes, sir, and that came about by four, last, within the last, I think, four or five years.
Really?
Yes, sir, they, yes, sir, they've got provisions.
So, they have to know where they gonna move it?
Yes, sir.
Did you buy one?
I'm not too old to buy and fix up. Okay, so that's where you go into the injunctions.
Yes, sir.
Stuff like that, right?
And, um, you know, injunctions, I, I, I leave it to, if you got a good attorney. But I, you know, they can be done several ways, you can write them a letter, you can go out there and put a placard out there on the yard. You got to stop and cease operations as of now, and these are the rea- this is the reason why. You're in violation of our, our, and subdivision, that makes it. Now, uh, again, if you, if you can go about doing it without having to go through all the legal, that, that's. I would always recommend that, but if you don't have another, if you don't have any other choice, you got the power to do what you have to do.
Here, here's another one that does pertain to, we've set up zoning ordinances. And for this subdivision, we require a certain size.
Lot and everything, that's right, exactly, I think, what it was in the, I think it's River Residential Two, if I'm not mistaken, right? Right, I think, which is a largest size and what would have been allowed, I think, in the River Residential One, if I'm not mistaken. But I can't.
So, we, we did establish setbacks and all of those things before that was.
Right, the city passed the amendment, until that even going into effect, right, that, that.
Okay, and again, people will buy because there aren't those restrictions. Hey, this is gonna be nice houses out here. Can the city go back and relax those standards at, at some point?
Well, I.
So, now, we, we're okay with putting a trailer out there?
I would say that the zoning ordinance that was in place during the time of the commission of the development should stay in place. And, uh, until that development, until, until that development, until that development is totally completed. Now, I wouldn't recommend that you go back and ease the regulations, uh, for that development. Because that might cause issues with the people who already purchased and built there, and, you know.
So, they have.
Make them to be, uh, more prone to, to sue.
They have legal grounds against the city with that.
That is, that is correct, because you're basically, uh, enabling, well, let me put it to you like this. You are creating a situation where their property value can be construed to be, uh, uh, reduced.
Yeah, but what, what, what you're mentioning too, is my recollection of what we did, that. Uh, the placing a trailer out there is specifically into that, that covenant. That the developer has with whoever buys that property. Uh the placing a trailer out there is specifically into that that covenant that the developer has with whoever buys that property. So what we did with our ordinance was establish lot size setbacks and all those kind of thing. He already had a covenant in place when we annexed it.
Okay, but then he can relax the covenant, we can't do anything about it.
Not after he sells the first property.
He's already sold lots established with a covenant, so if he if he did, if he did sell them and change what it was. Two or three guys down the road could say, no, we're gonna sue you because we bought this lot.
Yeah, but we can't do anything about it.
The city can't.
Because it, yeah, that's right, it's not.
Right, it's a private contract between the developer and the and the property owners.
All the way we can stop them if our zoning district does not allow for mobile homes in that particular area.
But we did that for River Residential Two, or?
And I think that's what we did it for, and we allowed for them to stay in the River Residential One, if I'm not mistaken.
What, mobile homes or?
Well, they were grandfather, River Residential One is where Furman Woods and built it, and this is River Residential Two, now we had the.
What's um um campsite?
Campsite is multi-use.
Which means they probably could put them on.
Yeah, cuz they already had them there. So you know where you had them, you have to grandfather.
The River River Residential Two prohibits mobile.
Right, right, but that's on the con- uh the contractor basically, and it's in the covenants between the contract. That's what he's got in his uh in his sales things that you can't have a mobile home by.
But we don't have anything that.
No.
Says you can't.
No.
I think if the Ri- River Residential Two district provisions uh state that uh does not allow for mobile homes, I think that you can enforce that. Which I do believe that the River Residential Two does not allow for a mobile home.
Okay.
Now with Miss Curling and that, or Miss Bailey's mobile homes ever burned or blew away or something, they can't put them back.
Okay, that's River Residential Two?
One.
One, okay.
This is River Residential Two.
So it's added to uh, no, it's mixed use, okay.
Yeah.
Down to campsite.
Right.
Do you have? The zoning maps?
The all the zoning maps are here.
Like we had at one time, do you have them in a software form?
Uh they they they're here, and uh I can I can I can send that to the city, and what the city does hit it. Uh being that's up to them, I I just can't.
Can you send that to the city then?
I I can send it to the city, and the city can dispose of how they want with it. If if the if the if the city leadership won't be to send it to somebody, I I gotta be careful because that is a legal, that's a legal document. But I think I know where you get that, Mr. Allen, you 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 wanna know, you wanna know what ground can do what you.
No, I just, I have ideas, and if I had something that I can look at, then instead of run down here and, it used to be on the wall over here.
Well, again, I I I I'll I'll policy is.
I got some small copies of it. I got some uh uh lem uh eight sheets of that.
Read that.
Well, only thing you reading is the uh 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 residential, I mean.
That be the case, I can give you this one, if you say he can't read.
I think I've probably got.
Probably, yeah, cuz when I had these, I think I had it in my baby by the time.
Well, I think you sent some for, I think it was attached on a PDF of, for the meeting.
Oh.
Maybe not.
You know, this kind of never, it's up there, it's.
Well, when you sent, you know, when you sent us the agenda, you sent us some maps at one time on email, you know.
That's 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 probably, that probably, probably is, probably is. I probably do, well, uh again. If I'm allowed to, I'll send you a copy, I'll buy that.
Okay.
Alright?
Well, I have have the old one, but I I don't think it included any of the development.
No, no, and and the new map will not have that in there because we have to get that information uh s- since. We have to wait till that plaque has been recorded, and the tax assessor's information is updated. Before it come out on our map, because our maps are cop- generated from the information based on the tax assessment.
I think it might be a year or two.
Well, I'm not gonna say it'd be that long, but it could be that.
Yeah, absent of the zoning though, you can go to Tennessee Property Dad and see every lot that's on back there. It's on Tennessee Private Dad, it's just, it's just not associated on that map with what zone one.
Now, once we get our if our parts of that information updated, it will be on the next map that we generate for you. Because we got, every year, we gotta go through this rigmarole, download, get all of the downloads from the property, not property assessors. But the controllers and everybody else, the data sharing, and then when we get our, they give, when they give it back to us. We have everything that these local assessors have, and it'd be up to them then. But right now, until until we can get it from the controller, now. Tom might be able to work out a deal where he can get it from the local property assessors, but uh.
But he give it to us, we have, yeah, Kevin Hinton, he he works with us.
So we we probably could get it that way, but uh I can I I can check and see if that uh those lots is uh. Where we are on that, try to get our maps update, see what you're talking about.
I think I got a copy of that map. I mean, I got a copy of the map, the developer, whenever we first started developing. He sent me a copy of the map that had all the lots on it, the elevations and everything.
I think you got one printed out for you. I think you got one printed out.
I might have, I don't know if you did that or not.
Brought it over to the house and.
But it had all the lots on it, it had the elevations and everything on it.
And you said, I thought you were gonna print that for me.
Well, this is pretty big, I didn't think it's probably about this size.
Around, you said, oh, here it is right here.
Right, no, it was that size there?
Thirty, twenty-four by thirty-six.
Yeah, okay, I might have got, I might have had you print that out.
Yeah, like you said.
Okay, well, I got that with all the lots on it down there.
Okay.
Are you the one that ran off our Marina developer?
No, his fool ass ran him off.
You know they locked him up, don't you?
Yeah, I read in the paper, I was keeping up with, boy, that was good commentary on our, we were laughing, we had plenty laughing material for a while.
Alright, is there another question, or not, we adjourned?
All because he come in.
Hold on, uh, ain't ain't no need to meet next month, or when y'all wanna meet again, uh. Uh, ain't. If business come up.
If we have business come up, I'd say meet, but I don't see a point of meeting before May really, I mean, we don't really have anything stirring. Something comes up with the Marina situation, we may have to meet. But now that wouldn't even come to us, that would go to the Al- Board of Aldermen because there's an ordinance in place.
Right, 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 that's right, it's sure, so what we'll do is just uh, let's look at May, and then we might just bump it. If we don't have any business in, we'll just, but I think that even if we don't have business, we need to at least meet every three months.
Yeah, to get them training sessions, and so we'll have to be trying to coordinate.
This is February, March, so let's look at May.
So we have another training session today?
Yeah, I we we had one, we had, no, cuz see, the the one we did back last year, that was that kind of for that year. They said we gotta start all over, and we gotta have four. Just just be two. Excuse me for my coarse language, certain question was asked by a certain event, I'm sorry.
You're you're on streaming now.
Man, I'm so sorry.